Calling to order, the Wednesday, May fifteenth, city council meeting, all rise. And I'm gonna ask Officer Stone from the Police Department to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Sotell.
Here.
Councilmember Washi.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer is absent. Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood is absent.
Okay, we have six council members out of eight present tonight. Next item on the agenda, Agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Sotell, seconded by Councilmember Washi.
Sure.
All in favor? Any suggestions for changes, amendments? All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. No changes. I see none. Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have public comments. I don't see any cards this evening, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the amendments. May I have a motion for the approval of the amendments?
So moved.
Uh, this is gonna be first for the special city council meeting held May first, 2024.
The six o'clock.
All in favor, the six o'clock meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Any changes? Okay. Next, motion for approval for the minutes for the regular council meeting at seven PM on May first, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any changes, deletions, friendly amendments?
Yes. My light.
Joanie's got a light on.
It's my light.
Councilmember Norris.
It's a friendly remind, uh, a amendment, um, in your recognizing Fire Chief Jim Roschery and Community Affairs Officers, that's Captain Mark Barnhart, not Woolbright.
Okay, friendly amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Your minutes are approved for the seven PM meeting for May first, 2024. Next item on the agenda is appointments, presentations, proclamations, announcements, and any public hearings. First item, we have the swearing in of the newly appointed council member for Ward Three, Gretchen Luth.
Aye Gretchen Luth.
Aye Gretchen Luth.
E solemnly swear.
E solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the State of Missouri.
And of the State of Missouri.
In all laws and ordinances.
In all laws and ordinances.
Governing the City of Bridgeton, Missouri.
Governing the City of Bridgeton, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of council member.
In the office of council member.
For the City of Bridgeton, St. Louis County, Missouri.
For the City of Bridgeton, St. Louis County, Missouri.
Next item, I'm gonna ask for a motion for the election of a council chairperson?
No, I'm sorry, roll call.
Oh, roll call. Okay, now we're gonna do roll call again.
Councilmember Sotell.
Roll call on what?
If you're here.
Forward. Okay. Here.
Aye.
Councilmember Washi.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer is absent. Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Luth.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood is absent.
Okay, we have six council members present. Next item is gonna be the election of the city council officers. Do I have a motion for a chairperson of the city council? We're gonna open nominations? Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to open the nominations for council chairperson.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Luth, seconded by Councilmember Sotell. Motion for chair, Councilmember Norris.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Luther.
Second.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Luther, Mrs. Luther's credentials would make her a great choice for this position. I'm sorry, do you need a vote on that? I'm sorry, beg your pardon.
Okay, motions made to nominate Councilmember Luther for chairperson of the city council for the next year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other nominations? I see none. Motion to close nominations for chairperson?
I'll make a motion to close nominations for chairperson.
Second.
Motion made to close nominations for chairperson by Councilmember Luth, seconded by Councilmember Norris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Councilmember Luther, you are our new chairperson for the next year. Okay, just the nomination, okay. We're gonna vote now to place her into the chairperson seat. We're gonna do roll call?
Yes.
Roll call vote by the chairperson, by the city clerk.
Councilmember Washi.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Luth.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Sotell.
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of six to nothing, Kathy Luther, councilperson Luther has been appointed to chairperson. Gonna open nominations for treasurer of the city council?
I'll make a motion to open nominations for treasurer of the city council.
Second.
Motion made to open nominations for city treasurer by Councilmember Luth, seconded by Councilmember Norris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Okay, nominations are open. Councilmember Washi.
I'd like to nominate Bob Sotell.
I guess second.
Second.
Any other nominations at this time? Okay, nominations are closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Of Councilmember Sotell?
Yes.
For treasurer?
Roll call, roll, right?
Not yet, just nomination. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any names? Now we have a roll call vote. Move to close the nominations and roll call vote.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Patel has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to, for roll call vote, for Councilmember Sotell for treasurer.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Luth.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Sotell.
Aye.
Councilmember Washi.
Aye.
All right, at this time, I would like to call forward Reverend Mark Bade, and he's also chaplain of our Bridgeton Police Department. He's gonna have some words and prayer. Thank you.
If you would bow your heads in prayer with me. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for all that you have provided for us. You have blessed us in so many, many ways. We are thankful for all the freedoms we enjoy in this great land, the United States of America. I pray that we never forget how fortunate we are and how we are able to assemble here tonight, free to conduct business and discuss the affairs of our community. I thank you, Almighty God, that we have the freedom not only to conduct the affairs related to the city of Bridgeton, but also that we have the freedom to worship. It is a freedom sorely lacking in most parts of the world. We may never, may we never be so callous as to forget how precious the gift is to us. I ask tonight that you bless and protect the employees of the city of Bridgeton, each and every department. There are many people who work behind the scenes to make our lives better. We may never see them all or meet them all, but they are there, working hard to make our lives and our community better. Keep our police officers safe, as they work diligently to guard our safety. Enhance their skillsets with your heavenly wisdom. Let them know that we are holding them up in prayer daily. I pray that your presence will guide Mayor Hein and all the members of the city council as they attend to tonight's agenda. May they never forget to diligently seek your wisdom and your counsel in this council chamber. The calling to serve presents a great responsibility. May you ever remind us of that. As the Apostle Paul expressed so well in Ephesians, "Now all glory to God, who is able, through his mighty power at work within us, to accomplish infinitely more than we might ask or think." Glory to him and the church, and in the Christ Jesus, through all generations, forever and ever. And we all say, amen.
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 Thank you Pastor Bade. Pastor Bade is from Bridgeway Church Assembly of God here in Bridgeton. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, under G, number three, I'm gonna call forward Cordell Whitlock. He's with Great Rivers Greenway. He's gonna give a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Um, my name is Cordell Whitlock. I'm with Vector Communications, and I'm here on behalf of Great Rivers Greenway to talk a little bit about the greenway and the North County Listening Tour. So Robert's my wingman. We ready? All right, let's do it. So, um, GRGs is a public agency that plans, designs, and builds greenways. Their mission is to make the St. Louis region a more vibrant place to live, work, and play by developing a regional network of greenways. Next slide. GRG defines greenways as outdoor spaces connecting people and places. Each greenway is unique, reflecting the character of the communities it connects, which is one of the reasons why public engagement is so important. Next slide. GRG works with community stakeholders, as well as hundreds of partners from other agencies, municipalities, nonprofits, community organizations, and businesses to make the greenways relevant. You can see right there, there are a hundred thirty-five miles of greenways that receive over three million visits per year. Uh, two hundred fifty partners work with Great Rivers Greenway every year, along with fourteen thousand volunteers. Ninety-four cents of every dollar that GRG spends goes towards building, promoting, and sustaining the greenway network. Next slide, please. So this is a map of the active greenways. Right now, we have eighteen active greenways and more than fifty projects going on at any given time. The vision for GRG is six hundred miles of greenways that will connect St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and St. Charles County. This map shows the first three hundred miles that have been identified as priorities by community members and the one hundred thirty-five miles of existing greenways that have already been bought to life for people to explore and enjoy in our region. Next slide. This just shows the ways that GRG engages with the community in terms of building, promoting, sustaining the greenways. And we can move on to the next slide. So what I'm here in essence to talk about is the North County Listening Tour. So the North St. Louis County Greenway Listening Tour aims to engage elected officials, residents, business owners, and other stakeholders to determine whether a greenway is wanted and will benefit the communities of Bridgeton, Hazelwood, Florissant, Blackjack, Spanish Lake, Old Jamestown, and unincorporated St. Louis County. To GRG's credit, they understand that, uh, the days of showing up in someone's community and putting a shovel in the ground are over. And in order for projects, whether it's a greenway or anything else to work, uh, you have to gauge public interest, uh, you have to talk with elected officials in the community and see exactly what's a good match. Next slide. So the North County Listening Tour, as I mentioned, we're engaging areas in North St. Louis County that have been underrepresented in previous engagement processes. Uh, the bottom line is, we're trying to educate the community on the greenways, let them know, uh, all of the benefits the greenways have to offer, and to see, um, what communities, if any, are interested in having a greenway in their community. And we're also trying to identify the preferred method of enhancing connectivity within these communities. Next slide, please. So, the aim of this is to get folks to fill out a survey. Now, I sent a lot of information to, um, the council and the city manager about four or five weeks ago, and I realized that was an awful time. You all had a lot of things going on. Um, I did get a chance to have a, um, individual conversation, a Zoom with Councilwoman Luther. I appreciate that. I hope you found that beneficial.
Thank you.
Uh, if any of you would like an individual Zoom, um, I'm gonna send another email following this with, with my contact information. Our goal is to get two thousand of these surveys filled out by June twentieth. Now unfortunately, um, compared to the other municipalities, we're far behind in Bridgeton, but we've got a month left and we're going to catch up. Next slide, please. So far, we've had three open houses. We had one May seventh in Hazelwood. We had one, uh, actually, we've had two. And then we had one, uh, last week in Florissant. So, um, my, one of my asks is, we have a street team that goes out to various community events, and we actually distribute the survey. So, um, I know you all have a, a, um, Paint the Pet event. Kevin and I talked about that next week, and my, uh, goal is to get a member of our street team out there, um, to distribute the survey. And then we'd also like to have another activity in the Bridgeton area before June twentieth, which is when the survey wraps up. So, we have an ice cream truck, so I'm hoping to piggyback maybe on a family-friendly event, uh, where you have kids involved, and we can roll out the ice cream truck, have free ice cream. The way you get the ice cream, though, you have to fill out the survey, so that's the stick in the carrot that we use. So, we find that is, uh, usually effective. So the ways we've gotten the words out, we have a billboard, uh, in North County, and we also, I don't know if you all have seen the yard signs. We put several yard signs around the Bridgeton area about a month ago, trying to direct people, uh, to take the survey. And then once again, um, any ideas that you all have, I'm gonna send out an email tomorrow regarding engagement. If there are groups, organizations, individuals in Bridgeton that you think would be interested in learning more about greenways, by all means, send me that contact information, and I will reach out to them immediately. Next slide. That's all I have, folks. Do you have any questions of me?
Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, I'm glad you're here. Um, I guess it's been like thirty years since, um, Maryland Heights became a city, and I've been, uh, avid with talking to them down there to kind of get connected. You have the Fifi Greenway, but it doesn't connect the Fifi Road. It'd be kinda nice if it named, I mean, it's named after Fifi Creek, but, uh, connecting that section under two seventy to get over to Vago Park, which then would really tie all of Bridgeton residents to Creevecar Lake and the Katy Trail and, and a really large area. Can you have any new upgates? As I'm out there riding by Creevecar Lake and some of the areas that, well, we're working on that. We're working on that to get, figure out how to get under two seventy. I know back in the sixties, we used to hike it, because it was the old streetcar tracks out to Creevecar Lake. And so, I know it's, I know it's available and it's there. I just wonder if you have any updates on that.
Well, Councilman Sotell, I think your question is the exact reason why GRG is doing this campaign, because they understand that, um, frankly, North County has not gotten the attention it's deserved over the past twenty or thirty years with regards to, um, educate, education about greenways, um, projects that GRG could promote. So that's why feedback, like what you just said, is so important. We need to hear from elected officials. We hear, we need to hear from residents about what areas do you want connected? You know, for instance, I know the folks in Florissant want, um, Sunset Park, which is their little sliver of greenway. They would like to connect with other municipalities. From a public engagement standpoint, North County is extremely challenging, because it is so spread out. Um, so that's why we have our street team, we have boots on the ground, and that's why we have the pop-up events. The idea being, we bring the engagement to the people. We don't wait for people to come to us. So that's why it's really important, um, over the next few weeks, that we do at least a couple of events here in Bridgeton, so we can get feedback like yours. Um, we can get the questions, we can get the concerns, and we can get people from the Bridgeton area to fill out that survey.
Another thing that we did in Bridgeton about twelve years ago, we have a walkable, bikeable, a bikeable plan that the city of Bridgeton has, that the council approved. I mean, this is back when I first came on council, so this is back in like two thousand ten.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so that shows with the citizens, we did have a lot of surveys and people talking with that, so maybe take a look at that from administration, uh, unless we update it, which was not a bad idea to look at. But, uh, a lot of that was using the old, the old tra, uh, trails and, and the old, like, the old St. Charles Rock Road that went behind the quarries and tying it in out to where we have the sections now along the river, which is great, but we lost the bridge out there, which is kinda strange, when they lose a bridge from Bridgeton.
Right.
But, uh, I know the goal is to tie it to Creevecar Lake through Maryland Heights, by the, by the casino and stuff like that, and that's still, and, and going north from R three seventy is another great plan. I saw that, by that in your drawing here, and I've seen the maps when you, when you ride the bikes, you know, the future thing. So I think that's moving forward very well.
And ultimately, as I mentioned, you know, GRG's ultimate goal, because we talk about the problems with connectivity in, in North County, is to get more communities connected. Get Bridgeton connected with Florissant, get connected with North County, with Spanish Lake. Um, you know, there's the new zoo going up in, uh, in, in North County. I mean, there's a lot of fantastic things going on in North County, but, um, GRG realizes, from their point of view, they need to do a better job connecting people, connecting communities in North County. And that's really, this is the first step in a long process where help, you know, hopefully there'll be a lot of improvement to that end. No other questions?
They don't write by seconds.
Councilmember Washi?
Hi, um, you mentioned you put up some signs in people's yards. Um, I haven't seen many of them. Do you guys have additional to where, um, we could, like, put them up in additional yards? Or are you guys out of the signs now?
No, we have them. So we, we didn't put them in people's yards. We tried to put them in the right of way. I got the police here, so I don't wanna get in trouble. So we tried to follow the law and put them in the right of way. But, you know, we've had a lot of rain lately, and we've had a lot of wind. Sometimes people decide to just, you know, yank them out, but, um, we can definitely, I think we have some extras of, um, and also if there are areas in Bridgeton that would be good to put yard signs up, or if you all are willing to put them up in your personal homes, call me. I will come out and put it up personally.
We might be able to, can I get, say, a comment on it?
Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we do get a portion of our billboard out there, so maybe through the city, we might be able to share that with our Parks Department occasionally for a purpose, for a dual purpose. Uh, that we, we get a portion of that on, on our, on our I seventy out here, which wouldn't just be Bridgeton, it's in Bridgeton, but it might be a good way to get out there and, and advertise on a piece that, if it doesn't conflict with our, our golf course and parks and stuff like that.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you very much.
All right, appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh-huh, appreciate you coming in. Next item on the agenda, I'm gonna call up our chief, Masadi. He's got the introduction of two new police officers.
Good evening. Thanks for having me in, um, inviting us to do this, uh, when we have new officers, but, uh, I'm really proud to introduce these two. They're both new to policing. So, uh, they didn't come from another agency, but they, uh, both just graduated from their respective academies. So the first one here is, uh, Michelle Messiano. She's originally born in California, but she has five children. They're all out of the house now. So, uh, uh, she did graduate from Steamwood High School in Illinois, and, uh, she spent a lot of years in the customer service industry. Uh, she had made the decision to fulfill her lifelong desire to pursue a job in law enforcement, and she put herself through the, uh, Jefferson County Police Academy. So, uh, while she was at the police academy, she managed to accumulate the most community service hours of the class that she was in. She also had the most ride-along hours and had a hundred percent objective proficiency, uh, while attending the academy. So, uh, we're really excited to have Michelle on our team and part of our family, and it's, uh, a pleasure to introduce her to our community. Next, we have Christopher Wakid. So Christopher's married to Danielle. He has three children. Uh, he's, uh, originally from Wentzville area, Holt High School. He spent his early career as an operations manager, um, actually working for a company to put these towers up, like the one, I think you actually did the one out here. So, um, that was what he had done before, but, uh, one of the things that he had was he also had a, uh, a desire to pursue a career in law enforcement. And one of the big driving points, I remember in his interview, that he had told me that he wanted to be a positive role model for his children and show that service back to the community. So just kind of, uh, sets the tone of the character of this fine young man. Prior to the police academy, he, uh, was also trained in AD, USAC, CPR, high angle rescue. So I imagine that had something to do with the towers that he was doing. But, uh, he actually went through the Eastern Missouri Police Academy in St. Charles, and he graduated, um, on April the eighth and become a member of our team. We hired him while he was in there. So, extremely proud to introduce him to the council and welcome him to our family and here in Bridgeton.
Thank you, and congratulations. Hope you're with the department for many years ahead. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Consideration of resolutions.
I move for the reading of resolution R twenty-four zero-two.
Second.
Motion's made for reading of resolution R twenty-four oh-two by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. Proceed.
First, can everyone hear me? I've been accused of speaking low, that people can't hear me.
If you get close to the mic, we can't.
Can you hear me? Mike, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. I'm not close enough to the mic, am I? Okay. There we go. "A resolution of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, for the submission to the St. Louis County Boundary Commission, the required map plan for the potential annexation by the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, of two areas of unincorporated land bordered by and adjacent to the city of Bridgeton, described herein and referred to as Earth City Annexation Area and Airport Vicinity Annexation Area for its consideration. Whereas pursuant to section seventy-two point four-two-three of the revised statutes of Missouri, there is established a five-year planning cycle requiring that any municipality that may want to file proceedings to annex any unincorporated area of St. Louis County during those years submit a map plan to the Boundary Commission, and whereas section seventy-two point four-two-three of the revised statutes of Missouri establishes certain actions to be met at certain times within this five-year annexation timeframe, and whereas the deadline for filing a map plan with the Boundary Commission is July one, twenty twenty-four, and the statute prohibits annexation attempts for the period covered thereafter, unless a map plan is on file with the Boundary Commission, and whereas the city of Bridgeton has decided to file a map plan for the potential annexation of two areas of unincorporated land, one located generally to the west and south of the existing limits of the city, and commonly referred to as Earth City, and the other area located generally to the east of the existing limits of the city, and hereinafter referred to as the Airport Vicinity Annexation Area, both of which are more fully described in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made part hereof hereinafter referred to as the Annexation Areas. And whereas this city council or future city councils would be denied the right to pursue a proposal for annexation of the Annexation Areas until year twenty twenty-nine, unless a map plan is submitted to the Boundary Commission by July one, twenty twenty-four. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bridgeton as follows. Section one, the appropriate officers, officials, and employees are hereby authorized and directed by the city council to submit a map plan substantially outlined below to the Boundary Commission outlining the unincorporated areas of St. Louis County in the Annexation Areas as described, to keep on file with the Boundary Commission for the coming five-year planning cycle in compliance with the revised statutes of the state of Missouri. Section two, said map plan will include the unincorporated area known as Earth City, which is bordered on the south- is bordered on the south by the City of Maryland Heights, on the north and east by the City of Bridgeton, and the Missouri River on the west, and the Airport Vicinity Annexation Area, which is bordered on the north by the City of Hazelwood, on the east by the City of Berkeley, on the south by the cities of Woodson Terrace, Edmondson, and St. Anne, and on the west by the City of Bridgeton. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Move for passage.
Thank you.
Move for passage.
I move for passage of Resolution R-2402.
Second?
Motion is made for passage of Resolution R-2402, seconded by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Resolution 2402 passes by a vote of six to nothing. Next item on the agenda, we have no public hearings. Next item, permits, waivers, appeal requests, none. Next item, no emergency legislation, contracts, or bids. Next item is going to be perfection of bills. Bill number 6435. Councilmembers, tell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 6435.
Second?
Motion's made for second reading of Bill number 6435, seconded by Councilmember Westy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Proceed.
An ordinance terminating the tax increment financing within the St. Charles Rock Road redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund related thereto, and authorizing certain actions related thereto. Move that Bill 6435 become ordinance number 24-dash?
22.
22.
Second?
Motion's made that Bill number 6435 become ordinance number 24-22. All in favor, say aye.
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 The clerk will call the roll.
Discussion?
Councilmember?
Discussion. Okay. Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to relate that this is regarding an old TIF that was on the Walmart facility that was started back in July 2010 and has been paid off. So people, the citizens like to know when you see something positive happening in our city, and it wasn't stretching on and on, but this has been done, and all their debts have been paid on this, because Walmart has been generating quite a bit of extra sales tax, and there's still a CID and a CIC, I think, out there. But this is for the redevelopment for the TIF, and it's very positive for the city seeing economic development being this successful. So with that said, I'm in favor of this going forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sotell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
By a vote of six to nothing, Bill number 6435 becomes ordinance number 24-22. Next item on the agenda, we have no consideration of new bills. No discussion items. Attorneys report?
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Communications. I'll start with Councilmember Norris tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have something to say. I just want to congratulate Mrs. Luther for Council... Good luck. I appreciate you, you know, the hard work you did before. I know we'll work together. Congratulate Mrs. Luther for Council President. Good luck. Congratulations to Council Treasurer, Bob Sotell. And I got, I did have a little bio about Mrs. Luther, so I'm going to say it now. I nominated Kathy Luther for Council President. Mrs. Luther's credentials would make her a great choice for this position. Longtime resident in Bridgeton, active in multiple leadership roles at her church, Arlington Methodist. Mrs. Luther's professional career with Concordia Seminary and St. Louis University brings experience in organizational, team-building, fundraising activities. This background in public administration will be an asset in this role as Council President. So I did want to, I worked on that, so I was going to say it. And it also, it was my honor to attend the planting ceremony from the Kiwanis Club, donated a tree, is planted at our Gentry Park in memory of the late Mayor Terry Briggs. Mayor Briggs was a great supporter of the Kiwanis Club. Also attended yesterday, the 32nd Annual St. Louis Area Police Chief's Memorial Breakfast. It was very moving and respective ceremony. We must never forget the sacrifice police officers and their families to keep us safe. Ward 4 meeting on May 8th was well-attended. I do thank my constituents for coming out. It was one of those nights last Wednesday, go or no-go, hail, rain, so we got it in, so I was very happy about that. And I want to thank Chief Masadi and Captain Fitzgerald for giving an update of the Police Division. I thank you. And also attended the Coffee for Cops on May the 8th at Starbucks. Glad many people greeted and met our police. Happy Memorial Weekend, and take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to be back. I wish the circumstances had been better for this seat becoming open, but I am thankful to be here. We will miss Terry greatly. Thank you, my husband, for coming and holding my Bible for me. And he left, but furt fetched for making it out tonight. He said that he was going to try to come just for that. I've already hit the ground running. I've been able to attend several events and address several resident issues as well, so I'm already on the go and getting things done. I have left my job at Salvation Army, so there is no more conflict with my schedule, and I don't have any other volunteer commitments right now, so I am 100% committed to fulfilling the duties of this seat. Thank you, Councilmember Luther, for your vote of confidence and wanting me to sit here with you. One item for the city that I want to bring up tonight is that I would like to see the Stormwater Subcommittee reconvened as soon as possible. We do still have stormwater issues, and it's my understanding there's not been a meeting since the last one I chaired, and I just had a resident visit today at their house for a stormwater issue. So we do collect a tax on that, and I think it is in the residents' and city's best interest to keep our thumb on the pulse of what's going on with stormwater. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for, everyone, for attending tonight, our special guests. It's great to have you here. Congratulations to Gretchen, who is our Ward 3 co-council, I think we'll look forward to working with you. I know you're already working. Also, congratulations to Bob, as Council Treasurer, and also to the new police officers. That's wonderful to see. That's really wonderful. So congratulations to have them joining. I also, I'm echoing Joni a little bit, attended the Kiwanis Tree Planting in honor of Mayor Briggs, and thank you, Stephen Westy, you took some great photos. So thanks for coming out for that. Also attended the Police Memorial Breakfast briefly, and then the Coffee for Cops, which was a lot of fun. That was a lot of fun up there. So last, I want to thank you for your vote as Chairperson of City Council. In that role, one of the responsibilities or opportunities is to create subcommittees, and I wanted to share with my fellow council members some suggestions for those subcommittees. Ask for your input and ask which, you can do that privately with me, also which you would like to serve on, but I'm also open to any revisions or changes to them. The first one, some of these are repeating or continuing, and the first is Stormwater Impact, with a goal to address stormwater concerns. The second is the Code Ordinance Violation Enforcement Subcommittee. That was created a year ago by then-Council Chairperson Heine, and I chair that. I would like to continue chairing that. The goal is to improve ordinance compliance. Then there is one that I'm modifying slightly, Council Rules and Professional Development. And let me explain what I mean by that. The goal to review and update council rules as needed and provide educational opportunities so that council can better serve colleagues, constituents, and of course, the City of Bridgeton. And last, this is a new Subcommittee, and I'm calling it the Business Plus Community Partnerships, BizCom Partnerships. The goal to engage local businesses in mutually beneficial community improvement programs and projects. So those are four. If I did the math right, that means that all of us would be serving on two. And again, open for suggestions, revisions, and recommendations to any of these, and also any that you might be interested in serving on or being chair of. So I'd like to get those up and running pretty soon. So just let me know. If those sound good to you, then we'll run with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Councilwoman Luke and to Mrs. Luther for chair, and also to Bob. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for allowing us to attend the National Prayer Breakfast. That's always a great event, and we must never forget. Very emotional. I know personally some people on that list, so that was a very emotional event for me. Also, congratulations to the new officers. And that's all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, I'll follow up a little briefly, but I think the number one thing was our new officers we just saw tonight. It's nice that we're filling those vacancies as quickly as possible. Everybody else, all their thank yous, I appreciate that as well, but it's time to get back to work now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Westy?
So going last, a lot of what I'm going to say, you've already heard, so sorry about that, but the tree dedication on Saturday I was able to attend, I thought was really great, so thanks to Kiwanis for putting that on, and Joni, or Councilmember Norris, thank you for letting us know about it. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the first tree dedication because it was in the middle of the workday, but I was able to make this one, and I am very happy I was able Councilmember, Councilwoman Luke, congratulations. Welcome aboard. Happy to work alongside you. Bob, our Councilmember Sotell, congrats on the Treasurer position. Councilmember Luther, I'm extremely excited to see you getting this position. Talking to a couple other council members, I think this is one of the first times that such a, somebody with only one, like, year of experience has had this position, and I think it really goes to show what kind of impact you've made so far. So I was extremely happy to be able to give you a vote for that tonight. Welcome onboard to the new police officers, and thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you. All right. Staff reports. I'll start with Mr. Gunn, Director of Public Works. Thank you.
I emailed out a tall grass list. We sent out in our 20 letters this week to homeowners, trying to motivate them to cut their grass. It's been a pretty wet week, so I would imagine if you can, maybe help your neighbors get their grass cut, because there are several people that are right now borderline out of complaints. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Gunn? I see none. Oh, Mr. Westy?
Has there been any update to the water main discussion about having to dig up the streets and by Bridgeway?
They're modifying their plan based on walking with them and looking at the amount of slabs that were, had been replaced last year, so they're currently revising that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have tonight with us the Assistant Parks Director, Vicki Ventrella. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple quick updates from Parks. Matthews Park renovation of the playground is nearly completed. We expect that to be finished this week. We hopefully have, you have received an invitation to the ribbon cutting on May 23rd. If not, I'd be happy to resend that to anyone that didn't get it. Fourth of July, we are still looking for event help for the day of the parade. We are pretty wrapped up for the planning process, but day of, if anyone knows of anyone interested, please send them our way. Myself, Katie Tucker, or Brendan can answer more questions. We had our senior picnic in the park today over at Bridgeway. Thank you to Councilwoman Norris and Mayor Heine for attending and supporting that event. And finally, the outdoor pool is filled, and all of the mechanical systems are working correctly, so that's exciting news from Parks.
Okay, thank you. Chief Masadi, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple announcements. The law enforcement torch run that the officers do in conjunction with Missouri Special Olympics, that's going to be at the, we're going to start our leg of the run at the Bridgeton Rec Center. That's going to be next Wednesday? Did I have it right, Steve? Next Wednesday, and it starts at 1:15 PM. That's approximate time that we get the handoff at the rec center, and then they'll run down Fifi Road all the way to Vago Park in Maryland Heights. So just wanted to let everybody know that that event's coming up. I'll get that out in a weekly as well to the council, along with advertisements on the social media. We also have a breakfast with badges. That's going to be on May 31st. It begins at 8:30 AM at the Chick-fil-A, 12450 St. Charles Rock Road. So we're looking forward to that event. That's us with Pattonville Fire District that's running that event, so that'll be coming up on May 31st. Just wanted to thank everybody for their support and attendance at the St. Louis Area Police Chief's Memorial Breakfast. It's always a very sad event to have to go to, but we do always want to remember officers that have fallen in the line of duty. Those of you know that we do have two officers from the City of Bridgeton that are on that wall and that scroll that goes down at that breakfast, so we always want to remember them. Congratulations to Councilmember Luke for coming back onto the council, and just want to make sure everybody has a safe Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions of the chief? Mr. Bookout?
I think Zach did a pretty good job of explaining that map plan that we submit, and I just wanted to let you all know, the last time we did that, even though the Boundary Commission typically does that every five years, the last time we submitted that map plan was in 2018, so they waited a year, but that is the exact same map that we submitted in 2018, which is the area unincorporated that's adjacent to us and our city and the airport. And that's the only unincorporated areas that are adjacent to the City of Bridgeton, so it is the exact same map. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The Mayor's Report. So I'll try and speak quickly here, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I've been doing the past few weeks, mainly in the office, cleaning out, purging files from the past nine years, trying to keep some that I'm not sure what they are, and I'll review them later, but I'm trying to organize the office and get it set up to my liking. Other than that, today, or if you want to consider yesterday, the 14th, just remember it's been three months since Mayor Briggs passed away, and we continue to support and communicate with his wife and family, Lori and Josh and Jeremy, so, and Haley. May 2nd, I attended the Kiwanis Club of Bridgeton Prayer Breakfast by invitation from Councilmember Norris. That was nice. And then I came back here and attended the National Day of Prayer, which was led by Reverend Boudet. By the way, he is also a Ward 3 resident, so he's got a lot of connections here in Bridgeton. That was a nice event. We talked about possibly trying to expand it next year, maybe at the rec center and look for additional participation. May the 4th, I went Saturday to the Bridgeway Park. Pattonville Fire Protection District had some demonstrations for the younger folks, and then there was also an author, she's a member of the Rock Fire Protection District. Her name is Laine Carl. She wrote a book called, "Yeah, I Can Do That." So she was there doing a book signing. That was, that was a nice event for both young and old. May the 8th, I attended Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks. On May the 7th, let me back up a day, I met with Maryland Heights Mayor Mike Muller, and we had some nice conversation, talked about maybe trying to do some more joint projects... we had some nice conversation, talked about maybe trying to do some more joint projects between Bridgeton and Maryland Heights. I attended the Ward Four meeting on May the 8th. And on May the 9th in the evening, I attended the Backstoppers Gala down at Chase Park Plaza. I've been a member for about 10 years and it's always a great event and it's a great not-for-profit organization that I like contributing to. They're there for our officers' families when the officers are killed in the line of duty and also other first responders, firefighters, and EMTs. In attendance also was Chief Masadi and Captain Wooton. So it's always nice seeing other employees there. I'm going to attend the pool party coming up. That's going to be for the employees, also for board and commission members and council members at the outdoor pool Friday, May 31st from 3:30 to 6:30 PM. Don't forget the concerts in the park will be starting soon. And remember that there will not be any Sunday concerts. There's three on Thursdays and one on a Saturday. I also attended the Memorial Prayer Breakfast yesterday, sponsored by the St. Louis Area Police Chiefs Association. And Chief Masadi was one of the speakers there, being the Vice Chairman of that association. He did a fine job and represented the city well. Also, I went to picnic in the park today for the seniors and there was a great, I guess, duo, two gentlemen singing and the music they played, I thought was wonderful from the 50s, 60s, and 70s. I always said, I wish I would have been born in the 50s, but I forget I was. I was born in 1959. But that's the, that's the music I like, like from that era back then. Last Monday or Tuesday, Councilmember Patel invited the whole council to join in the ribbon cutting ceremony over at Gojet Airlines Hangar. Gojet is a Bridgeton business. And what they do is they subcontract to United Airlines. They provide service for their United Express flights. They provide the plane, they provide the crew, the maintenance. How, and they were officially certified as a FAA 145 maintenance-based operation. So it was a big jump from them, from the 122. They can, they can do maintenance on any size, any type of aircraft now. So they're only one of two regional facilities in the country that are authorized to do this. So that was a nice feather in a Bridgeton business. Got to meet the airport director, so. Anyway, I put the ex-official assignments on your, on your desk there in front of you along with the calendar of when the, the boards and commissions meet. If you have a problem with fulfilling any of the assignment that I made, please let me know and maybe we can work it out where you can exchange with another council person. With that, I would like to ask for a motion to move to closed session.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, to move to closed session. Once we're finished with that, we'll come out and finish the council.
Sorry. And this would be a closed session for the purpose of discussing legal actions, litigation, or confidential or privileged communications with council pursuant to Section 610.021, RSMO, or, and leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect legal consideration therefore pursuant to Section 610.021 Sub 2 of the Missouri Statute. So that's the motion, I believe?
Yes.
That's the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is this roll call?
Yeah, it's a roll call.
Roll call to go into closed session.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
By a vote of six to nothing, we're moving to closed session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you.